Okay, it is six thirty. We will call the meeting to order, please. Roll call. Roll call, Joy.
Van Kampen.
Here.
Maher.
Here.
Schnelly.
Here.
Bano.
Here.
Mozon.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Haldah.
Here.
And Smith Beck is out tonight.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to approval of minutes of January second, two thousand twenty-five. We do have a correction to it, though, correct?
Yes, I have one correction. It's item seven D. And it's where I talked about the Oregon Bike Factory. It wasn't Oregon Bike and Skate Shop. It was the Oregon Bike Factory on Janesville Street.
Okay, I'll get that fixed.
Okay, so anybody have a problem with that? So we can have a motion to approve with that notation?
So moved.
We have a second. Mr. Maher has a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to public appearances, item four eight. It's a statement that we have at the beginning of every meeting. It says, allows members of the public to provide information to the planning commission, including items both on and off the agenda. The agenda item allows the commission to receive information and to ask questions of a presenter to facilitate a better understanding of the information. Commission members may discuss procedural matters relating to the information, such as whether the information should be directed to staff or placed on a future commission agenda. However, we cannot expand upon that. So, having said that, we have a lot of people in the audience. Our first item under public appearances, our new business, excuse me, is a public hearing. I'm gonna ask that anybody that wants to address that public hearing, and I'm sure you all know what that is, that has to deal with the planned development zoning down on South Main, one sixty-nine, two oh three, and two fifteen. So, if there are anybody that wants to talk about anything other than that item, or the other items on the agenda, can you come forward at this time? We'll allow fifteen minutes and three minutes per person. Anybody? Okay, so, I hope you understood what I said was, I refer you waiting out till the public hearing opens up if you want to make any comments regarding that particular item. Thank you. We'll move on, then. We'll open a public hearing, public hearing discussion, consider recommendation to the village board for a general development plan, a GDP, to allow for planned development zoning with a mixed residential MR-eight district underlying at one sixty-nine, two oh three, and two fifteen, South Main Street, applicating MSP real estate. At this time, we'll open the hearing. Staff reports.
All right. So, this project, South Main Street, was before you at a conceptual level at the January meeting. About five days later, we had a neighborhood meeting, which had probably twelve to fifteen folks. Quite a few that had attended the planning commission meeting the night before, or the week before. And then MSPs decided to move forward with their zoning request, this GDP, largely due to some of the requirements for the WIDA funding that they're seeking, since this would be a low-income housing tax credit project. They need to have zoning secured on the parcel by about the middle of March, so just try to have some wiggle room, so we don't get too close to that deadline if the project should move forward. Just to remind folks, with a planned development, it's they're using our multifamily zoning district, our MR-eight zoning, as a base, and then asking for certain flexibilities or exceptions from that zoning district. So, in this case, it's density, the number of units, front yard setbacks, so trying to keep the building kind of more in line with the historic front porches of the neighboring property, so moving a little bit closer to South Main Street. And then, an exception for the building height, I believe it's three or four feet above what is allowed in the multifamily zoning district, so about thirty-eight-ish feet. There are two steps to plan development approvals. One is this GDP, the zoning step, and the other one is the SIP, the site plan step. I'm mostly explaining this for just the folks in the public, so they can understand what's in front of you all tonight. So, the request in front of you all tonight is just the GDP, basically just those zoning exceptions, kind of the box that they're requesting to work within. So, they're agreeing at this point that they would meet all other, you know, building setbacks, landscape requirements, lighting requirements, things like that. Those details, as far as what the building would look like, what materials are used, what color is it, what's the design, where is lighting, where is landscaping, what plans are used, all of those details come at the SIP, or basically the site plan step, which I imagine this project, should it move forward, would probably be seeing more of those details later in the spring, or probably summertime. So, that's kind of just setting the context. The plan, as they described in the staff report here, looks very similar to what you saw in January. There was a lot of comments from the public, and from you all, too, at both planning commission and the neighborhood meeting. A lot of those comments were a lot of concerns about traffic, but there was also a lot of comments on kind of the design and keeping it in context with the look and feel of the historic neighborhood. And so, I think that was all really helpful feedback. A lot of that will carry forward into the site plan, SIP step, that would happen later this year, should the project move forward. So, everything else is really, they're just kind of, again, asking for sort of the meets and bounds, or the boundaries that they would be able to work within, the density, the number of units that they might like to have. Again, a lot of those final details about floor plans and building layout and all of that still to come. I think the only other thing that has happened since the, I wrote the staff report last week, I did have a chance to meet with the fire department on Monday about a variety of different projects. We don't have a full engineered, what they call a, like a fire access plan with dimensions and fire turn radius and things like that, but the general plan, the location of the driveway, the fire department was conceptually fine with. Again, they need to see the details and dimensions and stuff on the plan, but the fact that this has a turnaround within the parking lot, as shown right now, and the fact that it's located on the part of South Main Street that's still two-way traffic, they were, they were fine with. Again, conceptually haven't approved the plans, but that would happen, again, at that later site plan step, anyway. So, I just wanted to let you know, fire has seen this, and that was kind of their initial feedback. So, I guess I'll turn it over to the developer to add anything else, and then the public hearing.
That'd be fine. We'll have the petitioner, if you have any comments you want to make.
I don't think I have any comments, because I, yeah, I don't think I have any questions right now.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Planning commission members, we've had some comments in the past that we aren't heard well enough out in the audience, so let's basically eat the microphone, so we'll get close to it when we speak, okay? Okay, so there's, Elise has more or less described what this would be, you know, what it's gonna be like. It hasn't changed a whole lot since the last meeting, correct? They have addressed some of the issues. We have the Oregon area, fire EMS district has reviewed it, the village engineering has reviewed it, public works department's reviewed it, and our village planning consultant has reviewed it, and all have found it acceptable for the kind of GDP that we're requesting at this time. So, based on that, public comments. Now, with public comments, we do have several people that, Joy has taken some names, let's ask for those folks first, and if there's somewhere additional after that, fine, please have your comments, you're limited to approximately three minutes, please. Thank you.
The first one is Levon Ace.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need your name and address. Okay, thank you.
And I'm going to read off this, or I'll exceed my three minutes, probably.
No, I'm gonna keep track, trust me.
I know you will. I'm Levon Ace. I live at one sixty, South Main Street, and I'm the fourth generation owner of my home proudly. There's a beautiful sign right past the driveway of the UW clinic that reads, "South Main Historic Neighborhoods." As I recall, there was a lot of interest in preserving and honoring those homes that are a remembrance of our village of Oregon's early development. I am honored to be a part of that neighborhood. A few items I'd like to share with you. I heard comments about the traffic flow on South Main. In those winters where we have lots of snowfall, the snow was piled up at the end of the first block in front of my house. Sometimes the pile is so tall, I can't even see the houses across the street. I know there have been bottlenecks when you get to the end of that street, where it narrows, especially when cars are parked on the other side. Not sure if this proposed fifty-five unit complex will affect that or not, but I thought I'd bring it to your attention. There's a very large apartment comp, this is a very large apartment complex with lots of asphalt, blacktop, concrete buildings, whatever they build with, which will cover a lot of green space and ground that currently absorbs rainfall and snowmelt. I'm sure the flow of water will be impacted. I don't, not sure how, but just something to think about. The structure itself is very large and certainly wouldn't match the current architecture around it. I have an idea. One of the proposed lots is currently vacant. Perhaps a smaller senior housing apartment could be built on that lot. I've heard comments at a planning commission meeting of how getting the proposed building to fit in with the surrounding houses. Perhaps a smaller building could be taller in the back, and then shorter in the front, maybe two stories, with the, maybe, community room in the front, and a front porch, which would fit in beautifully with the rest of the houses in the neighborhood. Also, since there's more street parking available up that way than downtown, there would be less visitor spots needed for the building if it was up a ways. If the fifty-five unit project is approved, hopefully it will follow to the suggestion of not as tall in the front, taller in the back, smaller in the front, nice front porch to fit in with the surrounding architecture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Blue.
Gentlemen. Surprised to see there aren't any ladies.
We would like to have some.
My name is Chris Blue. I'm Levon Ace's husband. I've not lived in that house for four generations. I'm relatively new to the area, but I do know the difference between the old highway and the new highway, so I guess that lets me into the neighborhood. As I reviewed the structure, and I reviewed many of the remarks that I've been picking up on the internet and from people around, the concern remains for me, and also for Levon, that the height of the building at three stories is excessive, and it's a monstrous thing next to the houses that live next door. My family was involved in St. Louis real estate all the years of my upbringing, and so I was a part of a lot of different conversations about various kinds of developments that we were doing. We were into the commercial real estate, did a lot of apartment, dwelling buildings, and things like that. It was always important for the things that we added to a neighborhood to look like the things that were already there. First, to be able to help them become more attractive, and second, because the aesthetics helped the value of the properties remain equalized or growing. When I take a look at the concept on this, all I see is I turn the corner at, at Sunny's, I'm gonna see nothing but this monstrous structure sitting there and not see anything else. And I would really like to see that the rest of the housing in the area remains of value to the people who are living there. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Michael Doran.
Michael Doran, three one nine, Janesville Street. I realize that we're not in the detail at this point, but I just want to reiterate a couple of concerns that I've mentioned in the past about this project and others in the downtown area. There are, as mentioned, single-family homes immediately to the south, and there's a lot of value in those old, single-family homes. It's part of the history of the community. That type of housing is hard to replicate in the modern time that we live in now. So, my firm belief is that we need a much better, more robust screening on the south side of this project. And also, a softer edge, shorter building on the east, or in the south end, rather, it can grow a little bit as it goes around to the west, but on the south end, as it approaches those single-family homes, I think it should be a shorter building and more compatible with what's there. And then, talking about the architecture, I think we're in a very unique situation here in the village. We've got this gorgeous downtown, really. Do we want to keep it this way, or do we want to have it look like every other town that's been developed in the county, where we've got architecture that doesn't match the history of the downtown, of the village? So, I think it's really important that the architecture is very carefully developed so that it does match what we're, what our images for the future downtown of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Molly Bacchus.
You pronounced it right. I'm Molly Bacchus. I live at two twenty-five, South Main Street, so I'm right next to the proposed development. So, I lived in that house from the day I came home from St. Mary's Hospital in nineteen eighty, until the day I left from college in nineteen ninety-eight. For the next twenty years, I lived all over the country, but the little bungalow on Main Street was always my anchor, and Oregon was always my home. Four years ago, at the beginning of twenty twenty-one, I moved back in order to spend more time with my mom, who has lived here in that bungalow since nineteen seventy-nine, and my dad and stepmom, who live in Pittsburgh. I have some questions, but I do want to say something about my mother. Our house was built in nineteen fifteen. My mom has lived there for more than forty-five years, which is nearly half the lifespan of that house. From day one, she has been its steward, hand-stripping, restoring its craftsman woodwork, learning about its history, repairing its injuries. She subscribed to American Bungalow Magazine. She took gardening classes at Ulbrich. She created beautiful landscaping around the house. She planted a pocket prairie in the backyard before prairie restoration was cool. She researched its former tenants, and when strangers showed up the door saying that they'd grown up in the house, my mom invited them in. So, I think in these kinds of situations, it's tempting to dismiss people like my mom and her neighbors as pesky old ladies or grumpy nimby's, and to dismiss their concerns is unimportant, but please keep in mind, for us, these houses aren't just buildings, but they're family, and they're part of our family. So, a question I have is that one of the stated rationales for building senior housing at this location is due to the walkability of the location and proximity to the coming senior center. And as someone who grew up here, I can attest, it was very walkable in nineteen eighty-six. Back then, we had a pharmacy, a grocery store, library, post office, village hall, and police station, all within a ten-minute walk. However, nearly all of our public services have moved to the outskirts of town now. The grocery store, the pharmacy, village hall, post office are all a mile away from that site, and the library is a mile and a quarter. I spend a lot of my time with senior citizens, and they don't want to walk two miles to get groceries. Another question I have is that the developers said in previous meetings that they thought the traffic impacts would be low because senior citizens don't leave their houses very often, but we're talking about a fifty-five and up facility. In this economy, retirement age keeps being pushed back later and later. Half the people I work with at the Madison Children's Museum are in their sixties and seventies. The folks I know who are retired are busy volunteering in the community, playing golf, meeting friends for lunch, going to exercise class, and most importantly, going to Costco. So, this picture that's been painted of little old ladies and men, you know, taking the Buick out for a spin once a week seems pretty outdated. And finally, I do want to just reiterate, I know people brought this up previously, but the traffic seems like it would be a big impact. Currently, there are two houses on those three lots. Each of those houses, I think, have two cars, so that's four cars. The proposed development has eighty-eight lot spots, so that's adding, you know, eighty-two vehicles to this little corner. It's kind of a weird little spot in the village. It already kind of gets backed up, so it seems like it would be a big impact on traffic for the neighborhood. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
And the last one that registered is Melanie Barwise.
Hello.
Hi there.
My name's Melanie Barwise. I live at two four one, South Main Street, and I sent you via Elise a whole bunch of documents today.
Yes, I have them.
Great. My husband and I lived out on, in the town of Oregon for ten years, and one day, we were painting that house in a small subdivision, when we saw an open house on South Main, and I about tripped and fell on myself because it was the house I wanted. And our house is listed on that sign that one of the ladies made reference to. It's considered worthy of being on the national registry, and we love it. And it's concerning to me that, I'm not sure how much planning or thought has gone into just because some lots are available for sale, that this is a good place to put a three-story building. Living out on MM and A for ten years, traffic was a huge issue, and it was one of the reasons we moved. And it's horrible to say, but two people died right in front of our home, and it was one of the reasons I wanted to leave. And there's a lot of traffic on South Main. I complained to the police department after the meet, last meeting that I was here, somebody on the commission mentioned that there wasn't the funding or personnel to deal with certain issues in the police department, simply because of staffing and funding. I did file a formal complaint and got a traffic monitor set up on South Main, and I copied all of you on the traffic data that was collected. Approximately five thousand car trips went by in a week, and speed, I believe people kind of ramped it down a little bit because they could see their own speed. It happens. But I got a call from Officer Sergeant Coulson night before last, and he said they were gonna put up a less conspicuous monitoring box to record data for the next week, and we'll get a more accurate bead on speed going forward for the next week. I agree with what Molly had to say about, I mean, adding fifty-five beds, that's a lot of cars and a lot more traffic to go through our small community. And a new friend of mine developed a survey, and we put it out, and sixty-seven people responded to it, and about ninety-two percent of the people thought that some about, I can't remember the breakdown, but everyone was opposed to this project happening in this location. They're not opposed to it happening somewhere in Oregon. We're not opposed to senior housing per se, but having it right there doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, given the surveys that you put through the village recently, and you published that data. Things that the people in the community said that they wanted was more parking. And I kind of question what you're gonna do with that many more cars, and I don't know that the people, if we have eighty-eight more cars come into the community, where are they gonna park in our downtown? People are already complaining about parking and wanting sit-down restaurants, and it is a concern of mine, that I don't want planning to happen in a haphazard way, simply because some lots are available for sale. I can see that we need housing everywhere. I feel like we need affordable housing, and the Affordable Housing Report that came out recently, I felt almost sort of passed the buck and said that it's not necessarily the village or the state's problem to provide affordable housing. Perhaps I didn't interpret it correctly, but I see a lot of restaurants and businesses in town, all with Help Wanted signs, and I don't know that anybody can afford to live in Oregon and actually work the jobs that are available. One of the houses that would be torn down to build this proposed development houses a lot of the staff that work at a new, successful restaurant just adjacent to, that's two oh three, South Main, which is also on the historic registry. And I wonder about the impact if that house is torn down on one of the few remaining restaurants that still has sit-down eating and that is actually viable at this time. So, I hope you'll consider all of the things we submitted. It sounds like the community wants downtown to be a vibrant location. They want more parking. They want sit-down restaurants. They want historic preservation and character maintained. And I love my little neighborhood, and I agree with some of the other comments, that it'd be a shame if people were coming into town, getting stuck in traffic, and all that they can look at is a three-story building. So, that's my perspective, and I hope you'll consider the things that we submitted.
Thank you. You have a lot of work you did. Thank you. That was it? Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Feel free to, yes, come on up. I'm sorry, this, first person.
Hi there. My name is Danette Peyer, and I live at two six five, Hayler Court, in Oregon, Wisconsin. I, this is the first that I am hearing about this proposed building, and I'm gonna make this short and sweet, but the biggest concern that I have is safety for the people that would be living in this housing unit. I have frowned, and I feel that it was poor decision-making on the part of the planning commission, I would imagine, to have ever approved the big monstrous building that's across from, was it the, the bank that there is there, where the railroad track goes across? That building is very, very close to the railroad track, and I'm not exactly sure that I fully understand the dimensions of the lot that this is proposed, this building that is being proposed to be built on. But if there were ever a train derailment, I feel that there is going to be a major catastrophe in this community, and I feel that we, as members of the planning commission, you guys, and we, as members of the public, owe it to the people that would be moving into a complex like this to provide for their safety. And if there were a train derailment that were to occur for, for any reason on either side there, is there going to be an allotment of room if that train derailment were to take place? And what would be the impact on the housing unit? Because I could see it potentially crashing right into this building, and that there would be casualties as a result of that. And I think that as members of the planning commission, you need to be cognizant of the fact that these things can happen. We've had a lot of national disasters. We don't need a community disaster. And I feel that if it ever happened, that those sins are on your backs, if you ever allow this go through. I personally am opposed to it, even though it doesn't directly impact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, way in the back, you were the next, well, you're both good chance. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry.
Jeff Hendricks. I'm the pastor at Faith Lutheran Church, just three houses down from, from here, just on Elm Street. And I, I speak in favor of the proposal with a little caveat, and it's, it's the echoing of the, the fit in the community and how those are beautiful historic homes there. I'd love for something to actually fit in there. And the, the master plan that was developed just recently, I think, had a, an option two, that, with, with a little different arrangement of, of buildings and so on, and I think that would be a great, great fit, maybe a good alternative for, for this. But it's a great location. It's a great idea to put a, a senior living facility here. It's walkable to so many things downtown. It would really improve the quality of life for the seniors. It would really improve the quality of life for the seniors that would live here. They could walk to so many things, get coffee, and walk to church. And we just started a school this year too. So I could envision a, maybe a good partnership between our church and our school and the seniors that live there. So I think it's a great location. I think it's a great idea. And so thanks for, thanks for working on this. But I, I hope you would keep in mind the historic flavor of the community and what might fit best, best in the, in the space. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mark Smith. I'm at 122 State Street. And the reason I'm here is because, as I voiced our neighborhood meeting, that was a few weeks ago, is traffic and safety. If you look at the picture of the development, it focuses on two intersections. My concern is that that is not nearly the whole picture. I live on State Street. I make a lot of left turns onto Janesville. And it's getting dangerous. In three tenths of a mile from downtown to Kirkstead Avenue, there are seven intersections. That would be like seven intersections between downtown and Lincoln Street, the school, or downtown and Burr Oak. There's a lot of intersections there. You don't probably notice it because they're not congested currently. Currently is the operative word here. Traffic is getting dangerous. There are times when I'm making a left turn on, either on State Street or on any of the streets that are nearby. And people drive angry when it's congested. Angry. I get passed on the right a lot. That new shoulder that's there, that's kind of unmarked and unlabeled. People just go around. If I'm stopped at the crosswalk, and there is a crosswalk right in the main access point for where this apartment is scheduled to be, if I'm stopped for, this has happened, a mom and her kid, somebody went around on the right on me. They almost hit those kids. Congestion is not linear. You're adding a lot of traffic into a place where traffic is just not supported. A lot of intersections, a lot of close intersections, a lot of blind intersections, a lot of blind spots in the intersections if you're just trying to look out side paneling. It is dangerous. I think you guys are probably going to reference your general development thing at some point. But you made a point of developing safe communities, taking time for planning. I am alarmed, alarmed and deeply concerned that a full traffic study has not been done on all of these impacted intersections. It impacts everything from downtown, north a couple intersections, and everything from downtown to Fair Oaks and that area. One car, one car trying to turn left into this apartment complex, busy time of day, will back up the traffic when it does it already. This isn't hypothetical. It backs it all the way up from, you know, State Street to Fair Oaks and beyond. And that's when people start getting angry. That congestion is a real concern because we're talking about growing the community. I looked at your plan. You're talking about adding a whole bunch of people and a whole bunch of different spots. And those people are driving through town, past those intersections. Past those intersections means that you're, you know, losing out on a lot of left turns, right? But people coming out of that complex have no choice but to go down residential streets to very narrow spaces to make decisions and to see what's coming. I think it's dangerous. I think it warrants much, much more investigation than what currently seems to have been done. You know, you can, I think you can do it the easy way. You can do it the easy way, be like, oh, the land's open, let's develop it. But I don't think the easy way is the right way. I think you guys need to take a real look at this and how it affects all of the traffic, you know, downstream, do some load monitoring, something like that. Because I don't want to be that person walking across the street with my kid going to school, having somebody pass on the right and getting hit by a car. I think it's dangerous, and I think it needs a lot more study. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, come on up, please.
Hi there.
Hi.
My name is Chandler Moss. I live at 218 South Main Street, so directly across from where the driveway will be exiting. Isaac and I just moved into this neighborhood in July. We chose it because we loved the historic feel. We loved how walkable it was. And we're scared that we're about to lose that. There's a lot of little kids that go to school on their own, teenagers as well. Our next-door neighbors have a nearly two-year-old who plays all the time in these streets. And it worries me that there will be so much traffic coming into this neighborhood. I know, to echo the sentiments of my peers, there's been concern about the sentiment of the developers that folks will just stay home and stay in their apartments. I think, given the neighborhood and how active our elders are, that's not the case. And it worries me that kids walking to school, kids playing, and maybe our future family might not be very safe in this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of people. Anybody else want to speak? Come on up, sir.
Hello.
Hi.
Chris Pink, 904 County Road MM in the, in the town. So I was just saying, if this is for seniors, can we get, be able to have golf carts on the streets? I seen it down in, in Evansville. And I don't know, seems like that might help with traffic, but I'm no expert at that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Probably unlikely, however. Anybody else? You all just want to watch, huh? Okay, all right. All right, no other comments. All right, then we'll move on to the Plan Commission comments. Anybody have any comments? Pat, you've got an awful lot of notes on there.
You want to hear some of my notes?
Sure, let us hear some of your notes.
I appreciate the sentiment of everybody that's spoken. I've lived in this community for, gosh, 30-some years on Main Street, on North Main. So I appreciate your desire to retain the historic aspect of the neighborhood. At the same time, to the developer, I like your, your project, your plan. It fills a need. When we make decisions on the Plan Commission, we generally try to step down en masse and purpose. And the challenge I have with your project is, if it were adjacent to the business district, I could see that step-down logic. But the, the fact that you've got 159 South Main, a house there in between your project and the downtown, your project ends up being a block that's inserted into a residential neighborhood, not a logical step-down. I don't know if you've pursued trying to attain 159 South Main. But if your project moved to the north, I would be, I would feel a little more inclined to support it. But at this point, because it breaks up the neighborhood, I'm not, I'm reluctant to support your project. The sentiment of the historic value, those details can be dealt with in your building. I think, I see some attempt at that with the bay, bay windows, I guess, I'm assuming. There's not a lot of detail. We just have a plan. The comments about massing are very well taken. It needs to be stepped down on the south end. So I'm, I'm not totally against your project. Like I said, I feel it fits a need, but it just, right now, doesn't fit the site for me.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
A point of interest is whether our Historic Preservation Commission Committee has looked at this, or will they have a chance to survey that?
These properties are not within our downtown historic district, which is really, we have the downtown district, and then there's a small block on West Lincoln Street, so off North Main Street. That's also a historic district. So this, these parcels would not be in the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission.
A lot of those houses, however, are as old as ones that are in the district. And some houses up on North Main Street have been, some of them have been on a list. And I know from my living up there in an older Victorian home that it's, it has value, or it has historic value and that it's to the, to the point that Joan Giffkey and the group that put together the, the downtown historic district worked to identify other houses up in the north part of town. And this area, this area we're talking about is the heart of where Oregon started. And the village started there. And it is, seems to me like we need some input on taking a look at, at what there that's maybe proposed to be excavated out, that, that those spaces are looked at. And if there's some interest in getting a new historic district started, I think now is the time to investigate that. Otherwise, you cut out the possibilities of ever recapturing that, I think.
Okay, thank you. Elise, we, again, going back to the overall planning of the village that we've done in the past. And again, the Plan Commission doesn't necessarily do that planning. We also have had consultants to help us with that process. This particular area has been identified as avail, not available, but possibility for additional development, has it not?
So in the 10-year comprehensive, you know, the long-range plan that we just updated at the end of, through 2023, was adopted in December of '23, this neighborhood, kind of adjacent, directly adjacent to downtown, to south of downtown and some areas north of downtown as well, were included in what we called mid-scale residential. So the two residential kind of future land use designations are low-scale and mid-scale. Low-scale would be single-family houses and duplexes. Mid-scale would be kind of duplexes and everything up. But it doesn't mean, as I explained last time, that single-family houses couldn't continue to exist or, you know, be built on lots. But it was an area that, as a community, there was, you know, a lot of public feedback, as well as, of course, policymakers and staff providing feedback to the consultants that kind of expanding the footprint of downtown, part of making it more viable and active, having those businesses be, you know, able to stay in business, be, be busy with, you know, folks having events downtown. Part of that also looks like having more people live near downtown within a walkable radius to downtown to support some of those businesses and events and things like that. So again, that was sort of what was, what was it designated? It's shown as kind of a tan color on the comprehensive plan. I'm not sure if that's, that she made it into the packet. Yeah, so page 17, Lauren, of the packet, shows kind of the extent of some of those areas. So it's obviously not just downtown. There's other areas along Janesville Street, along CC, where higher-density housing was expressed to be, you know, a potential for growth. So the first thing, if there's ever a zoning change that I take a look at, is, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? And in this case, yes, it would be consistent with what was there. It doesn't specify that it has to be a three-story apartment. But it says that there are a variety of different housing types that could be considered if there was an opportunity for redevelopment on those parcels.
Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead.
Elise, from my own understanding and maybe for the audience too, what is sort of the tipping point for when a traffic study is needed or required?
So Lauren and I were just talking about that. Right now, it is somewhat, there are definitely projects that we've done them for before. They're typically more kind of a neighborhood scale, so like a full subdivision. For apartment projects of this scale, we typically have not, it's not a hard and fast rule that we've required them. We are working on an updated development checklist and clarifying kind of when, if and when traffic studies would be required and when that would take place. When they've taken place in the past, then usually they're at more of this subdivision scale. They're done before the plaques are approved. So it's not something that we, again, given our current code, could require, but we could request from a developer. But the projects that have done them most recently would be ones on Highway CC, the Think and Up Properties, the Regency project. That was about 200 units that was proposed. The reason they were required to do a traffic study was because that would be entering a county highway. And the county highway department has authority over, can you change the use from a single-family homes to apartments? And then they can require things like turn lanes, other things like that. There's not a lot, whole lot of space and opportunity for things to change as far as like the width of this road. But it's certainly something we could, you know, look at requesting down the road. It's not something, again, at this scale of a project that in the past we have typically required.
And then the apartment that was approved by the railroad?
Jefferson Crossing.
How many units was that?
That is about the same size. It's in the 50s, somewhere in the 50s range. Yeah, it could be six units.
And, and this might be for Lauren or Elise or both, if you want to chime in together in harmony. What is the typical traffic load for a feeder road such as this in the village? I mean, how much traffic is it? There was a, the unsolicited traffic report that kind of came in with 5,000 vehicles. I didn't think that was very exorbitant. But what is the typical sort of traffic load on a feeder road like this?
I wish I could tell you offhand. Each of these roads does have, like you kind of reference, a designation, a collector, a local street. I don't know what this one is, just off the top of my head. And we do have those numbers. They're in our map. I could certainly get that back to you.
I think it'd be important for us to have just for, you know, understanding sort of things. And then also maybe a couple of other streets that might be similar. And so that we could reference them in the village and, and to just understand what we're talking about. My opinion on this is it's a good use. I think that everybody that is coming and spoken is, their comments are heard. And they're well-intended, and they're soundly based. And I understand and support some of their grave concerns with this project as well. But I also have to sort of temper that with, just because they're asking for a 30, 38-ish foot height request, doesn't mean the entire project is going to be that high. It could only be part of it. So I have to have a little bit of faith and trust in the process. I also have to look at it through the lens of what they're asking for, and that's a GDP. And that's not the specifics. It's not the traffic flows. It's not the specific aesthetics of the building. Those will come. Right now, they're looking at sort of the 60,000-foot view. And everything that they're requesting, in my opinion, seems reasonable for, for what they're asking for. But that's just my take on this. Are there things that we still need to work out? Yeah. But through the lens of a GDP, I think that it, it does make sense.
Okay. But you stole some of the thunder here. But yes, the GDP, again, as John mentioned, this is just the first stage. And it does not give us all the particulars that some of you folks are asking about, which we have to go through this phase first before the applicant really wants to spend the money to do the additional studies, et cetera. Understand, there was one comment about water. They're not going to shed any more water off than it comes off right now, because we won't allow that. One thing that, that, and it's kind of a catch-22, whatever you want to call it. But I, I see in, in, I've read every one of those comments that I, I see in, in, and I've read every one of those, uh, comments that you sent us. A lot of things about, we wish we had more downtowns, uh, seated restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. In order to have that, we got to have the folks that are going to sit there and eat. And that's one of the things I've complained about the most in this village is that we don't support our local merchants. And if you want to support more local merchants and you want somebody to come in here to set up a restaurant, or whatever it may be, a small business, you have to have the folks that are going to go there and take care of it. This could be possibly something like that. It's kind of interesting to talk about these senior people fifty-five because I'm certainly beyond that. But I, I don't think it's a bad project. I do understand the fact that we have a, a residence, uh, you know, that's in between that, that is a nice residence. Again, I would hope that the applicant will take the comments from all the folks here and try to look at that and see what they can accomplish with their architecture to make it more appealing. You know, there's a lot, you know, they show right along the street. You show trees, you show shrubbery, things that help buffer it. Again, this is the first stage. This is not the final stage. Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to interrupt your spiel.
No, no.
But, um, I did want to, uh, address a comment that Patrick brought up about, um, the one fifty-nine South Main Street project and just what I've heard from the developer as to why that property wasn't purchased. One reason is, um, they didn't need all four properties that are owned by the same property owner here, um, to do the project. So as far as just trying to have a, a more reasonable purchase price, only kind of purchased land, um, the amount of land that they would need. That was one factor. Um, the other factor is that, uh, I believe the one fifty-nine South Main Street, uh, home that is in, um, kind of, it's in the best condition, kind of the highest value of all of the, the three homes that are on these four parcels. One, um, is vacant right now. Uh, there was also hope from the property owner that, um, because that one fifty-nine South Main Street is, that building is still in good condition. It's also closest to downtown. If there was going to be any kind of commercial use, which is not part of what, um, MSP is proposing, it would be, you know, just purely a residential building that, um, that, that home would be probably the best one to convert to a commercial use. Um, obviously there's lots, we don't have a ton of examples here in the village, but, um, Stoughton, Verona have a lot of examples where homes have been converted to, uh, bookshops, coffee shops, yarn shops, uh, dentist offices, there's apartments above, something like that. And, uh, while this does look different than some of the options that were presented by our consultants with the downtown master plan, which we'll talk about later on the agenda. The, I think the balance this was trying to, they were trying to strike to is, we recognize that you still want to have as much commercial as possible near downtown. If there's going to be a site that's probably going to be the most successful for commercial, it would be that one fifty-nine South Main Street because it's closest to the clinic, it's closest to downtown. Um, as far as, you know, reducing the distance that people would need to walk, having visibility to say, oh, look, there's a bookstore down the block that's, you know, close enough that I feel like I can walk after I, you know, buy a box of chocolates or whatever it might be. So I think those two factors, kind of just trying to buy the land that they needed for the project and then also, um, trying to, recognizing the fact that we still want to have, this is still an opportunity to have commercial and kind of expand that, um, commercial footprint of downtown. And if, um, that was going to happen, we'd hate to kind of lose the opportunity to do that on this block because this is just a residential building that they're looking at. They don't, um, I'm not sure, maybe the developer could talk about. I don't know that they do a lot of mixed-use buildings. Um, they kind of specialize in, in just, um, these residential buildings. So I think the hope was that, that one fifty-nine South Main Street would, could become something else. Um, keeping that integrity of the structure, keeping the history of that there, but that it could, um, have the potential of being converted to commercial um, in the future.
Thank you. Anybody else in the Plan Commission want to make some comments? Anything? Are there any more comments from the public before I close the planet, the, uh, public hearing? Sure, okay. Okay, at this time we'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to a discussion and possible recommendations of the Village Board for a general development plan GDP to allow the, for planned development zoning with the mixed residential MR-eight district underlying at one sixty-nine, two oh-three and two fifteen South Main Street. All right. We've had a lot of folks make some comments. A lot of it was on traffic. And I understand that. We hear that, I'll be very honest with you, we hear that a lot about developments. Uh, I'd like to believe that we can look at this and, and, and review something about traffic. And I would hope that the, the applicant would also consider that. And Lauren, you can give us some guidance on, on these roads and what they should be able to handle, whether they be collectors or whatever they may be. So, discussion. Patrick, you are contemplating something.
Well, there, there's a lot of land there. I would like to see it used. I think there can be a better use of it. I just don't like the fact that it's not taking into context one fifty-nine South Main. Uh, and I look at that, I look at that huge backyard. Is there a way to work with these properties together? If it was developed as a whole with a purpose for one fifty-nine, I'd feel a little more supportive, but at this point I, I just, it doesn't work for me.
The one fifty-nine does have some history. Uh, they were here before us many years ago. And they had, uh, there's a family, remember that Scott?
Limerie, Limerie House.
Limerie, Limerie House, yes, correct. And, and they did some effort to, uh, open it like a museum or something. I'm not sure what it was. Yes, and I'm not sure whatever happened to that. It just kind of went away, but it's a nice home. I hate to see it necessarily go down just to, you know. I see, it, it does have a very large backyard, yeah. I want to believe that, again, we are at a point where we are talking about a GDP. We're a long way from looking at a final plan, an SIP, traffic studies, uh, route, water, et cetera, et cetera, architectural stuff. So we have to keep ourselves focused on, that's all we're talking about tonight. You agree with that? John, that's, that's where we are. So, all the folks are standing, are sitting here wondering what we're going to do.
As much as I would, um, love to have the crystal ball and, and be able to say that, this is the way that it should be, uh, we have to look at, in my opinion, is we have to take a look at a project on a case-by-case basis because that's what's presented to us. Um, I don't have the crystal ball to look at one fifty-nine and maybe the UW Health Building is seeing its life expectancy and they're going to come in tomorrow with an expanded project that takes up the backside of one fifty-nine. I don't know. And I, I, I don't have that opportunity to say that it's going to happen. But I do have the opportunity to see what's going on with these properties with our current understanding of what's going on in the village. And again, with the GDP and the needs that we have in our community, I think that it's a good fit and a good location and a good concept at this level. So I would make a motion to approve the GDP for one sixty-nine, two oh-three and two fifteen South Main Street.
We have motioned, we have a second.
A second.
We have a second. Okay, discussion. Patrick, you made your comment. Anybody else have a, any additional comments they want to make regarding this?
I guess I'll, I'll say I'm going to vote against the motion, um, but I would encourage the developer to do a little bit more exploring, particularly with the backyard of that one fifty-nine.
I would, uh, would wonder if we could table this and for time to get more information together of the addresses, the things that we're worried about.
Well, in particular, what would it be? The traffic or would it be, we can't, we can't table long enough to, for any discussion about one fifty-nine. And one fifty-nine doesn't really come into play here because we have a application for a parcel. It has to be with that parcel, or those parcels, excuse me, those three, those three, uh, addresses. We have to deal with only that. And it's a GDP and only a GDP. Traffic will come later. It's not part of the GDP. Under, Lauren, you're smiling. You have to agree, don't you? Yes.
Yes, I think there's probably, from an engineering perspective, time to take a look at that.
Yes. There, there's a lot of other engineering that's associated with this and architectural and, and, and plantings, et cetera, et cetera. Scott, you have any?
Do we need a second to discuss, for a discussion?
No, we already had, Larry had a second, we had a second. So we're already, we're at this, I'm sorry, we're at discussion.
Sorry.
I was struggling like Patrick with kind of leaving one fifty-nine hang out there, but hearing some discussion about possible uses for that and the current property owner not objecting to the situation. I guess alleviate some of that concern. Um, but I also wouldn't want this to appear like it towers over that building and the building to the immediate south, uh, two twenty-five. So I, I, I like the use in this area. I'm a big proponent of senior housing. I think this is a good place for it. I'm not over, overly objectionable to the general unit count. I don't necessarily like the way they're bulking it as far forward and kind of, kind of tower over the neighborhood. And I think that's stuff that can be fixed. This is the GDP and it's kind of giving them, uh, the latitude and the assurance that they can invest a lot of money in, in, uh, designs and stuff to move forward with us. So they, they kind of need that to move forward, but, uh, so I, I'm, I'm in favor of those things, but I'm not in favor of the current configuration and how it's probably going to look in the neighborhood.
And, and again, and I'm going to go, go right back to my, my comments earlier is that, that this is a GDP. And, and, uh, we've seen a lot of GDPs that change, you know, once you hit the SIPs. So.
Also feel we need to give them those clear marching orders.
Yes, we do.
You know, I'm not in favor of it the way it sits, uh, right now.
Again, we're just doing GDP. All right, we have a motion and we have a second. And it sounds we've had enough discussion. Uh, let's have a, all in favor say aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, ayes have it. The motion is passed. Thank you, folks. I'm, I see some frowns, I see some smiles, but this isn't over, okay? You've all got good comments and, and, and I'm sure the applicant and we, I certainly will look at that. And this is not your last chance to look at this. Okay? Thank you. If you want to stick around for the rest of it, we'd like, we enjoy an audience, so. Thank you. Move on to, uh, item seven B for discussion only. Review and update conceptual, uh, concept plan for the pro, proposed dental clinic at six fifty North Main Street. Applicant is First Choice Dental. Anybody here to say, talk about that?
I'll give a little background while folks are kind of filtering out and the First Choice folks are coming up. So, uh, thanks, guys. Um, First Choice Dental, um, site on, on six fifty North Main Street, a corner of North Main and East Netherwood there, um, right across from Walgreens. Uh, this was last in front of you. It's actually in June of last year, which is crazy to think it's been that long. There was a, a layout that was proposed on a, a larger site. Um, and since then, there, there was a TIF request and there's been a lot of back and forth between First Choice, the village, um, the property owner as well to, to figure out kind of how, um, to, to keep the project moving forward. Um, so the plan in front of you today, um, is largely similar. Um, it's a more condensed site. So again, trying to make the numbers work for their project, um, there was effort to purchase less land from the property owner. And so there's a more kind of efficient use of the land, uh, of the site, uh, there. Uh, part of that looks like a building that's closer to the corner, um, especially on North Main Street. Uh, a setback of more like twelve or fifteen feet versus our typical thirty feet. Um, I know that we've generally had an effort, especially on these entrance corridors, to have the buildings more of that pedestrian face. More of the building is what's, um, visible with the parking kind of tucked behind. So I think that this generally follows with that line of thinking. Um, but there would be, if this moves forward, a, a GDP, you know, a similar request to have a, a different setback there. Um, right now, I know they haven't done, uh, and I'll let you guys kind of talk about this, but the, the stormwater pond is kind of just a placeholder, sort of a worst-case scenario as far as, um, size, but soil borings, other things like that will help determine where that pond exactly lays out how large it needs to be. And we have run this by, um, obviously Lauren, her team and our, and our consulting engineers. There's no concerns here as far as like vision triangle with the corner. We still feel like people are going to be able to see around the corner for turns. Um, you can see that the driveway, um, is still off East Netherwood. Um, that's the preference, uh, as opposed to North Main Street, just given the grade there and kind of the layout of the site. Um, that driveway would not align with Walgreens, but because the site would really just serve, uh, that drive would really just serve, um, the dental clinic largely, um, at this point, uh, there's not going to be a whole lot of traffic coming through there. Um, last year there was a, a multi, a different multifamily project that was proposed there. And there was the thought that they could kind of combine their curb cuts. That would be, obviously be a lot higher traffic volume and we'd probably want to try to align either with Walgreens or Thompson Lane or something like that. So given the smaller scale of the project, I think, we feel like the driveway off East Netherwood where they're showing it approximately is, um, it meets our standards for distance to the, um, intersection and things like that. So I'll let, um, these guys introduce themselves and fill in the blanks. Anything else that's changed since last summer? Um, and the kind of feedback that you guys are looking forward tonight, too.
Well, thank you all for, um,
Yeah, pull the mics as close as you can, thanks. Yep.
Thank you for having us, uh, tonight. I'm Steve Lyons. I'm with Brad Crowley. We are representing First Choice Dental. Just a quick background of First Choice Dental. It was, uh, started nineteen ninety-six. We've just recently opened our fourteenth, uh, clinic, uh, in Dane County. So we like to think of ourselves as good business partners and community partners in each one of the communities that we are in. So, um, I also want to thank Elise and Lauren. Uh, Elise and I, I feel like we've gotten to, uh, know each other based on so many phone calls and so much interaction. And so, uh, it's, you, uh, you have really quality staff and Lauren in our last conversation and really looking at, uh, before you came here tonight, you know, are, what are the concerns? What can we answer? What can we fix? And so, um, we're here tonight to share our new plan and I'll turn it over to you, Brad.
Okay, thank you. I'm Brad Crowley, uh, eighteen forty-eight Construction. The plan that you see in front of you has changed, uh, since last summer. Uh, we originally were going to take the entire, uh, north-south block. The price of the lot was, uh, too much for our project to handle, so it kind of stalled out for a while. Uh, Steve and, and another gentleman reached out to the owner of the land and he suggested, well, why don't you develop a, a smaller lot and keep the space to the south for him that he can develop as a future lot. So that's mostly what you see here in front of you. With it being a corner lot, we have a thirty-foot setback on both sides on Main Street and Netherwood. Um, we were able to locate the building forty feet off of Main Street. Uh, but with the north-south dimensions, we're about twelve foot ten off of Netherwood. There is a very large terrace there. Uh, it's about ten and a half feet, I think, is what we decided our meeting last week with, with Elise and Lauren. We did look at lots of options of the parking lot being north and south or running east-west as it is. This layout allows for the drive aisle down to access that other future lot. Uh, that traffic to go through to that lot without, uh, crossing through all of our pedestrians in our parking lot. So like I said, at one point we had the lot north and south and that was one of the, the downsides of that. And I think in general, that's, that's kind of the changes from last summer. So our, what we're really looking for is feedback and engage, um, you know, the acceptance of that uh, variance on the setback off of Netherwood.
Questions? Is it the intention of that stormwater to be sized to handle both developments, yours and the future one to the south?
No, it is not. We are designing this just as a standalone property, uh, because we're, uh, not aware what they're going to do with that other lot. But we've done some preliminary layouts and there is room on that property for a building, parking lot and store water management.
I like the project. I think that this is, I don't mind the proximity to the street. I don't mind the proximity to the corner. Um, I think the building really fits in comfortably that way. Um, I think that- Um, I think that the parking lot gets really tight to the building. I will say that. Uh, I think that, uh, you've got a couple of parking stalls on the southeast corner next to your access aisle to the future that I would lose and make an island, um, to give yourself a little bit of buffer there. I'm old enough to be going into an elderly housing future in this village, um, and my eyes aren't what they used to be. What does that box say and that access aisle there?
On the bottom, it's a gravel turnaround.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
So we envision that being the drive out to the, to the future building. So for the time being, you know, it'll, it'll create our, our emergency vehicle turnaround.
Yeah, no, I get it. Um, I think that just my gut telling me, I think that your stormwater is sized graciously. Um, I think that I would prefer to have the access aisle and the, the, um, stormwater flip-flop to try to get the drive aisle closer to the access aisle to the Walgreens. So in other words, your detention base would be between the access aisle and the building. I still think there'd be enough room in there to do your detention that you'd be needing. A question for Elise. Uh, at the end of a parking aisle, do we have hammerheads required or not?
As far as I understand, we were actually just talking about this with a earlier project today too. Um, once we get into the site design, we might, obviously they'll have a, there'll be a fire access plan too that kind of looks at turnarounds. But even for people, um, who are just kind of in those far spots, or if they get down there and there's no parking spots available to make sure that maybe there is, uh, a striped space so they could pull into that and kind of turn, have a space to do a Y-turn. So if you do get to the end of the aisle, realize there's no parking, you don't have to go in reverse all the way back to the start.
So the options are to either do a hammerhead or to lose one of the stalls by striping it out?
That's typically how it's done.
Just so that you're aware, because I don't know what your count requirements are that you're looking for?
We're actually looking for about thirty-three is what they prefer. We got twenty-nine shown on here, less the, the island on the end. Um, regarding the pond, you know, we haven't proceeded on, you know, gee, a technical report to see what the infiltration rates are. We've based this on other, other buildings in the area. So we're hopeful it'll be, uh, smaller as well. And if that's the case, then we could have more room for more parking with, with the hammerhead.
What is, would, one of the, um, flexibilities that you might be looking for be the lot coverage percentage? This looks to be beyond what we typically would allow for this kind of development.
I'll be honest, we have not run those numbers yet. We were just, um, stuck on the, the variance for the setback on the, on the north side.
I don't, I, for me, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. Given the, um, so again, the comprehensive plan, the long-range plan, this whole parcel, all four acres is shown as planned mixed use. So that allows, um, mixed residential, so different kind of higher density housing types and a variety of different office, um, uses. I think it's, um, planned office, neighborhood office. There's, there's like five or six, uh, potential zoning districts that they could choose from to build off of and then have those flexibilities kind of requested on, in addition to that. So depending on which district, I think it probably ranges for the impervious coverage, the landscape surface ratio. For business, it's, I think, usually between like maybe sixty to eighty percent max of the, of the site can be impervious. So yeah, that will be a number. We'll definitely be tracking. It might be another flexibility requested. Would be given where that stormwater pond ends up landing to.
Go on to the next person. I forgot what I said.
I wrapped it there, sorry.
Did you ask about that? Thank you. I stepped out and I wasn't sure if my question was asked, but I just was, uh, at least maybe you know the answer to this, but we're creating another lot here to the south. And and if, are we gonna allow a driveway then on the Main Street?
So again, given what they're showing with their concept, I think what they've discussed with the, um, property owner, that the access for that, it would be probably another small commercial lot. Um, if you can kind of scroll down a little bit, Lauren, but, um, the access would be, it would be a shared drive um, through the dental, uh, parcel, um, into the parking lot. So probably not an entrance off North Main Street. I don't think there's probably room to do that. And again, given the, the grade, um, I do know that they've spoken with the property owner about, uh, whatever, if and when that gets developed as a commercial lot, just, uh, making sure that that's a use that they would feel would be a good neighbor for the dental clinic and a use that would be kind of compatible with the neighborhood as well as, um, something that would be complimentary to, um, a dental office use and more of a professional office building or something that doesn't create a lot of traffic.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Go ahead.
I don't have a problem with the way you've, you know, reoriented the building, the setbacks. I think work. I'm a little concerned about this lot to the south. I don't see any dimensions. I don't know what the size is, but it, it looks small to put stormwater parking and I don't know what size building. So I guess I'd kind of like to see a concept of how somebody proposes to make sure that's a viable lot. I don't want to orphan this piece of land on North Main Street that is highly visible and, and prime property. And I don't want to orphan it to a photo mat, uh, showing my retirement age by that reference. It just doesn't seem like, you know, this dental clinic isn't a, you know, a huge building and with its parking and its stormwater, it's using up half again as much space as we're leaving to the south.
The only concern when you say that though is that we're looking at a dental clinic going like, that's the only thing. But again, I'm sorry, back up. This is not a discussion.
We're allowing this land to be split and we don't want to orphan it.
I would obviously though that it, it would allow for something that would be, something could go in there.
On a version that we did decide not to share again, to kind of more focus on just the dental clinic discussion at this point. But I know that there was a test fit done of about a four thousand square foot commercial building, um, with again, kind of drive aisle on the east side, stormwater next to that, um, small parking lot. Um, I don't know, maybe fifteen spaces or something like that. And then, uh, uh, potential, uh, obviously again, we don't know who that user would be, if and when that would get developed. Probably right now it would be retained. It, it would just be green space buffer for that neighbor, um, if it, until that, um, property may, you know, get sold to somebody else.
You know, show interest or create interest in, in that development. Who knows? You know, I, I, one comment I think that John said, I, you know, it's interesting to think about moving that if it's possible. The retention, storm retention more to the west. And the reason I say, and then moving the driveway. Again, that gives you the full usage of the lot to the south, you know, entering at some obscure.
The other thing I wanted to note, um, and we'll talk about this a little bit with the next conceptual project, which is on the same larger parcel. Um, depending on the total number of lots that may be created, um, a plat might be triggered rather than a CSM when more than four lots are created, um, five or more. Uh, a plat is needed. So that would help us kind of take a look at just holistically, you know, grading stormwater and, and how all these lots would be divided on the site to make sure that, um, again, there's room for uh, development as well as, you know, the appropriate amount of stormwater and green space and other things on the lot. And, um, again, kind of take a little bit less of a piecemeal approach, but look at how the, the lot would be subdivided, um, more holistically.
We did meet with the, the landowners though and did a conceptual, what could go in there and thirteen parking spots, four thousand, uh, square foot building, something, you know, it could be a small law office, a US Cellular, uh, hearing aids. I mean, something along those lines, another small business with low, low traffic.
In the, uh, your idea of moving the pond on the other side, uh, have no constructability concerns with that, uh, as long as there's enough area there, because we're gonna lose the drive out going back in. So our box, our rectangle's gonna be more of a box. So if we can get it to fit, uh,
If you get it to fit, I, again, I just, I liked his, his thought process there because it gives you a little more flexibility on that lot to the south. That's the only point. I don't have any problem with it. It'd be nice. I've been living in the village for almost forty-seven years. And that, that lot's been empty the whole time, obviously. So it's, it's time to get it developed.
Is the clinic you're proposing the same size as it was last time you were through, or is this a little bit smaller?
I don't remember exactly which one we presented last time. It probably is a little smaller. Um, so we've built four of them in the last two years and the most recent one was in Mount Horeb. And we condensed that one a little bit. So this footprint is based on that, uh, clinic footprint. So it probably is a little bit smaller than, than what you saw a year ago.
Okay. You don't have any problem with it?
Looks good.
Looks good. Nobody else have any issues? Patrick?
I'm, I'm okay. I'm not super excited about it. I think, uh, the, the biggest revision I would like to see is that driveway moved to the east. So it does align with Walgreens. I'm concerned about traffic, particularly as somebody's exiting the clinic and left turning onto Netherwood. I see some congestion and potential accidents. Um, I wish the architecture engaged the corner, the geography a little better, but I understand you're trying to maintain a budget. So at least we're using the site. I don't, I'm not crazy about the site being developed piecemeal. Um, Scott, I think has some very good concerns about that lot to the south. You know, what's the potential for it? Uh, but nothing to stand in the way of voting against this.
Okay. Just a quick response to that. You know, we could move the building to the west. You know, we are forty foot from the setback on, on that side. So it could get, could get closer to Main Street and might give us more room for the stormwater management for the pond. It'd be two of those parking lots, so.
Yeah, I definitely like the proximity to the street. Now you said twelve, twelve foot ten, is that from the sidewalk? Or is that to the terrace? Where's that?
That's to the lot line. So, uh, the plan on the screen has the backgrounds in a little bit, so it shows there is some green space from the lot line to the sidewalk.
Good, okay.
Uh, so there's a little more room, but without, we haven't done a, you know, full survey of the property yet or, or, uh, geotechnical report. So we'll confirm that exact location, but it seems like there's some good green space there. Just not thirty feet. It's weird, you know, it's a tough lot because it's a corner lot. So we have thirty foot setback on both sides.
And you got some grade to deal with.
Is the angled line a property line or is that a vision triangle?
The forty-five degree corner, I believe, is a vision triangle. That must have been, must have been made years ago.
You could pull the building forward and not be too close to that as a property line then, if you wanted to move the building westward. It's showing forty, forty-eight feet off of the property.
And that, that front, um, entrance element's about eight feet deep. Yep.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you the next time. Seven C. Discussion only. Review of concept, concept plans for affordable senior multifamily development at six fifty North Main Street. Uh, applicant is JT Klein Company. Come on up, sir.
And I'll give a little background too, while they're getting settled. So again, same parcel, um, the six fifty North Main Street. We're just shifting a little bit to the east. So, um, JT Klein Company, who, I'm sure they'll do a great job, um, giving some background on the, um, themselves, but, um, they're based in Madison and they do a lot of affordable housing development as well as ma- um, market rate housing, um, within the area. Um, they have about just shy of two acres under, um, contract from the property owners. Um, you'll see on their plan, they didn't have the latest, uh, kind of rotated and condensed dental clinic. So that doesn't exactly match up, but just to give a concept of, um, what they've discussed, um, internally and with the landowner about, um, potential kind of uses for the rest of the site. They're, they have a multifamily, um, building, three-story underground parking that they're proposing. I know that, um, pretty early on, I think we met with them maybe in December at a staff meeting. Uh, we did get them connected with fire, um, department. There's definitely still some outstanding, um, issues to be resolved as far as hose length, um, different types of sprinkler systems for the building. Um, so that's all still kind of in discussion. But again, obviously this is just conceptual, but I wanted to let you know that those conversations have been happening with the fire department. Um, and then Lauren, maybe if you could just scroll to the next page too. Um, they could talk a little bit about what their plan, obviously what their plan looks like, but, um, the property owner right now, in addition to, again, kind of that reconfiguration that's, we just discussed on, um, the corner, um, Outlet eleven, what's, what's noted there, that's actually a private, that's a different owner, that's a single family house. So, um, that second commercial lot, again, it's not shown on here, but that would be part of that corner. What's all kind of shown is dental clinic right now. Um, the JT Klein project is that building one and parking that's shown kind of running north-south, um, in the middle of the site. And then the thought right now is that the owners would retain the corner that would be closest to Soden and East Netherwood and do something that's more kind of a, a step down to the single family neighborhoods that are adjacent there. So something like duplexes, um, stormwater, again, they can talk a little bit about that too, um, to serve this apartment project. Um, could kind of be tucked behind the duplexes is the initial thought, how this all lays out, how things are redrawn as far as parcel lines. That's all part of that discussion about, um, maybe kind of doing more of a direction of a plat on the parcel versus just CSMing everything out, um, piece by piece. Um, but I'll turn over these guys to introduce themselves, talk a little bit about, um, their projects and then, um, specifically kind of where you are with the design on this site. And, um, again, kind of the feedback that you're looking for from planning commission at this point.
Thank you, Elise. Um, as you mentioned, uh, we're with JT Klein Company. My name is Danny Fobley. With me, I have Jacob Klein and Kevin O'Donnell. Uh, we are a local development company. We all grew up in Dane County. Uh, we spent a lot of time in Dane County and see it, it change. At this point, we have about eleven buildings, uh, that are completed, two more under construction. We've done a lot of successful, affordable and market rate housing in the community. And, um, we have yet to do anything in Oregon and we think that, uh, we really like everything about your community. We think it's a great area for affordable senior housing. And what we have proposed to you today is at the very first step of a sixty-unit, three-story affordable housing, senior fifty-five plus, uh, building here. And, uh, this building's gonna be various different incomes between thirty and eighty percent AMI. Um, it'll have underground parking. As you can see on the drawing here, there'll be a little bit of surface parking. And we've started to work on addressing some of the fire access feedback that we've been receiving as well. Um, we use very high-quality, um, building materials. We work with KBA, a local architect that, um, has done a lot of, uh, our work for us. And, um, in the packet, we submitted some of the, uh, previously done art. This would be Oak Ridge, Oregon. Our brand is Oak Ridge. Um, I believe it's from our Oak Ridge University Park project. And we like to make sure that our, our residents are gonna spend a lot of time inside and outside the building. But inside the building, he can control, um, by having various activities, community rooms, fitness centers that are all, for this particular one will be with seniors in mind. There will be, um, there we go. Um, so this is from our, uh, Oak Ridge at University Park project, just to kind of give you guys an idea of, uh, the type of product that we build, the level of finishes that we like to use. We, um, we grow, like I said, we're from the community. We want to build these to last within the community. And, um, as I was saying, there, there's gonna be senior specific amenities. We have property managers that are, uh, specifically trained for our senior housing, that they'll hold events, keep things going on. There's always an activity calendar that, um, really engages our community and encourages them to interact and kind of go on trips. And we provide any amenities, library spaces and things like that. Um, specific to the building, um, as Elise mentioned, it's going to be in the middle, kind of off the dental clinic area. And we think that, um, it, it's very consistent with the future land use map, which calls for the, uh, mixed use, so which can include some of the high-density residential housing. Um, again, another very high-level concept, but, uh, just below that is kind of an exterior, concept drawing of how some of our projects could look. Uh, again, three stories. Anything? Uh, and anything you guys think? Yeah, and we'd like to present this to you guys to, you know, get your feedback on just the concept that, uh, we're bringing to you here today.
Comments? Anybody? I don't see a real problem with it. Um, some of the comments made earlier, it would be kind of nice. It would be kind of nice if you could work with the owner of the property, see whether or not he uh is interested in working with the the parcel to the east, you know, so he could do some kind of a combined.
Which one is going to the east?
The 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 duplexes. I understand that, but I'm saying we'd like to see the whole thing developed. Okay, that's, I'm thinking, so the comments before was it sure be nice to see this all happen. Kind of at the same time, obviously duplexes be, you know, maybe as needed. But you know, you have infrastructure has to be completed, all that. Let's get that done, if possible, you know.
We were planning on doing this storm, the stormwater as part of like, in, which is like in their backyards as part of, that'd be like part of our.
Okay, alright, alright. Well, again, just put that in your mind. It would be nice to see if there's. I don't know if we'll have, probably have some curb cuts, we'll have some street cuts probably. Sure be nice to get it all done same time.
Or at least, so you're saying like at least like have them like buildable type like like lots?
Yeah, that'd be fine. That's fine. That's, I get that. Okay.
I'm just trying to get it so we can convey it back to Jim, right?
Yep.
Because, you know, that is.
Can you speak in the microphone?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my name's Jacob Klein. And because I get it, it's tough, like especially, you know, we didn't know those guys are going to be here tonight with the with the dental office.
Well, and again, maybe go space with them, you know, just see where, just, it makes sense if you're gonna, you know, everything's conceptual at this point. If it nicely works out, may not, probably not, we'll see.
I will say there's a lot of discussions we've been having with Public Works too for some uh related utility projects um and improvements in this area. So I think, yeah, as this, if these projects move forward and things kind of start to get set into their possible locations, you know, where curb cuts, laterals, things like that would be. Um, yeah, we're working really closely to make sure that the projects um work together nicely and that we have infrastructure. If there's improvements needed, that they're, they're kind of timed correctly, so.
When, um, can you kind of walk me through the decision as to why you put the parking against the street and push the building back? Because I think that when we saw this last time, it was kind of flipped, wasn't it?
This is the first, this is the first time this group has been here. Yeah, Lake Stone was the, yeah, totally different concept last summer.
It pushed the building up against the street. And I'm, I'm just wondering, trying to understand where you, where your mind is, because I just want to know.
Um, we thought, because you have all the single family homes, that by doing that, then when you have the cars coming in, you're kind of blocking the music. You're using kind of a building to block the car lights coming in, it's kind of, or a thought was there? And and because you got the single family homes on the, you know, behind it. And that was kind of also why we tried to kind of run it the long way versus like not doing the um, you know, taking away from where the duplexes are. And and having more of a building that was on the street. So that, that was the thought, the thought process there.
You have a issue with it or?
Well, I, a couple of things. Um, I prefer to have the building pushed up to the street. Because um I think that uh it would slow traffic down. I think there's a lot of traffic on that street. And I think that anything that we can do to sort of help maybe slow that down, and that's putting buildings up against the street, which tends to slow them down a little bit. Um, uh, that's what I would do. And then put my parking in that sort of southeast corner. Uh, which shouldn't hurt your fire department access any. The other thing is um you might want to have your architect take a look, start to take a look at the grades on this site. Because I think part of what came in on the last time a project came through is the grade on the backside, the south, is considerably higher than it is at the street. And if you put a finished floor based on your back of the lot, you're going to be up in the air considerably more than you think you are. Unless you're going to have a step or only do like two floors on the south side and three floors on the street side. There's, there's a fairly good grade change from memory.
Yeah, I think that the, the plan was that, that the, the long part, your, you know, the basement's probably pretty substantially exposed.
So.
Yeah. Um. But we can look at moving it, moving it, moving up to the street. And and I'm sure we had at least one, one time that we looked at that and trying to get the parking to work.
Uh, and then if you want to pass on to the developer for the lot to the east, I know that it's not part of your project. But I'm not a fan of having three more curb cuts onto Netherwood. Um, I would rather have them do a private cul-de-sac in the middle of the lot somehow and have those duplexes come on to that. Um, than, than having three more curb cuts, trying to back out of your, trying to back out of your duplex going forty-five is a complicated move. Um, and it's just asking for another accident on Netherwood.
Is there a minimum parking requirement that you're looking for on a senior, like affordable housing deal like this that we could shoot for? Because I think we're, you know, we're probably at least one to one over underground and we're probably heavy on the, the surface lot to begin with. So if we could get some direction on, on what you might look at for that.
I guess talk to staff. They can help you all with that, I think, you know, go back and look.
Yeah, our requirement for just all, whether it's senior or regardless of bedroom size, is one and a half spaces per unit. Um, we know that for some projects that's high, some that's low, that's kind of an average that that was changed a couple of years ago. So I know the South Main Street project that was um item seven A, I think they will have a parking, they had a parking exception request too. That was one we didn't really talk about too much, but they're at like one point three to one. Um, and I think that's based on their other senior projects they've done. They've seen that um most people just have one car per household and then there's fewer visitors um at a building like that than there would be maybe with larger families. So um that would just be part of your kind of plan development, flexibility requests.
Okay, otherwise, anybody have any real major issues with this? It's conceptual. Give it a shot. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Great, thank you for your time.
You bet. Uh, moving on, item uh seven D, review and possible recommendation to village board of the two twenty, two, two thousand twenty-four downtown plan presented by consultants from redevelopment resources and studio G W A.
Good evening, busy night. Um, exciting to see so much activity amongst um all of these items. Thank you for having um us back. I'm Ashley Sarver. This is Erin Holverson. Um, we're based out of Studio G W A. We've um seen you before. It's good to be back. Um, we were just coming back uh after the last meeting. I understand there was some requests for um, you know, some additional changes. We've worked our best to incorporate those and so are just presenting those uh this evening. Um, so some of the changes, I won't go through the whole plan. I just kind of want to hit on the changes that you see from the last plan to what you see uh this evening. Um, and one of those things is the introduction of um a tagline as well as some uh, an emerging theme and principles. So the theme, um, and I, I wouldn't say we did not start with the theme. The theme emerged after a lot of conversation within the community, um, and also based off of some of the best practices. So um on page five of the plan within the executive summary now, you'll see that um the theme of a rural charm with a bustling future um emerged as a theme that we believe encapsulates the thrust of this plan. Um, and then some of the principles that guided us throughout this um plan were, uh, we had four of those. Enhance the downtown center as a place to gather. Number two, increase housing opportunities for this growing community. Uh, number three, provide additional retail and commercial space for the expanding business interests. Um, and number four, promote walkability and bikeability. Um, and then we took those principles and tied them back to the opportunity sites. Uh, if you'll remember, there was ten opportunity sites that were developed as part of the plan. Um, and so we looked at these, the concepts that were presented and tied them back to these principles. So some concepts hit all four principles, whereas others maybe hit two or three. Um, so we wanted to just tie those pieces together. So you're seeing the concepts and the principles um being related back to each other. Um, we also developed um some design guidelines. Um, and Erin, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the design guidelines that were added um within the appendix.
Yeah, came up last time, kind of guiding principles for, for redevelopment or um additional development in downtown. Um, as, as you'll see in it, it's, you know, the main, the main thrust of it is try to prevent poor development in the, in the areas. Prevent things, not necessarily spell out exactly what things need to look like. Um, so um general principles, they're, they're consistent with what you would see in a lot of communities and in uh with the scale that we're looking at here and also looking to the future. So general guiding principles, nothing, nothing um tried to avoid being incredibly specific in, in a lot of that, um, just knowing the type of document we're looking at here, so.
Right, I would say the design guidelines are that they're kind of guiding philosophies rather than, you know, and I'll um sometimes design guidelines are their entire own uh adapted policy. Um, and it's more of a checklist for, you know, development and design. This is really a um, the, the first step before um the community might take on a full set of design guidelines for development, in our opinion. But we would open it to any questions, whether on what was added or from previous aspects of the plan.
Doesn't appear to be any. You put a lot of work into it. Yes, Phil, you're.
I have one.
Sure.
I'm, I'm not in love with rural charm, with a bustling future. Rural to me sounds like towns, and I can say that because I used to live in. That's just my thought, but I'm not comfortable with that word.
Maybe small town charm or something like that?
You bet.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Elise.
Good. So are we ready to recommend to the village board?
I'll, I'll make a few comments on it, but overall, I like the work you've done. Um, I think the most effective parts of this are the opportunity sites. Um, I really like the design guidelines and I think that could stand on its own as something that downtown property owners could have, developers that are coming in could have as kind of a, an idea of what we're looking for. So I like those. Um, I, I brought it up, I think, two or three versions ago, meetings ago, the Sanborn map. Um, the colors don't mean anything to me and I asked what they were. And the only change I'd like to see in your plan is a key that explains this is a masonry building, this is a wood building, which was the answer I got at that meeting. So.
Sure.
That would be awesome if you could make that change. Um, but otherwise, I, I have no objections to the plan. Um, but the plan like this is only going to be effective if it gets used. If it goes up on the shelf, uh, it's money wasted, right? So to staff, I think it's really important that we keep this as a, a living document. Um, that's why I like pulling out the design guidelines and utilizing that. But I just hate to see something that so much work has gone into and then it gets forgotten about in three, four years' time.
Yeah, I think one thing that we included in this plan that we haven't in others, or maybe to the extent, um, but the implementation matrix that they did as far as you know, obviously some of the properties are, the opportunity sites are privately owned, some are publicly owned. But starting to give a recommended um timeline as to uh what to take on first, who to work with, when to pull in partners like the Chamber or um other stakeholders to kind of just get conversations started about what these parcels could be, knowing that they're not going to all get redeveloped at the same time. They may not ever get redeveloped. But I do know um as we move forward with our capital plan, planning for the village, that's usually happens through the summertime. So that's our big, you know, investment projects, um, at least for Waterman Triangle Park and then also kind of the future of Old Village Hall. I think we got a lot of really helpful feedback from, for those village properties as far as what people would like to see there. And so I could see definitely um us moving on projects or um ideas for both of those properties in the near future. Good comment noted.
Okay, I, I just want, a couple of things. Um, I want to echo, uh, I don't like rural. Um, I'm not even sure that I like small. I mean, I grew up in a small town. It was fifteen hundred people and that was on Thanksgiving when people came back. Um, so, but small seems more fitting than the rural aspect of it. Um, I also want to agree with Patrick. I think that the downtown design guidelines are very helpful because they sort of set a tone. Um, they may not have teeth unless we sort of hold them to that, but it sets a tone and I think that's equally important at this point, so. And I also want to put a plug in for a nice signage example for the free house. I was just there a few weeks ago with my daughter and my wife, so. I highly recommend it if anybody's in the Twin Cities.
Um, are we in a position to uh, to make a motion with those subtle differences, changes, or no?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I will second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nice job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very nice, very nice presentation. Yeah, very nice, thank you. Okay, item uh seven. E, review of possible recommendation to village board for an extraterritorial jurisdiction, certified survey map at fifteen eighty and fifteen eighty-six county highway D. Town of Oregon, property owner is, I'm sorry.
Belkary.
Belkary Farms, thank you. Typically on this situation, we, we just say we don't have any objection. And that's sufficient.
We have no concerns with this outside of our, you know, planned neighborhoods and things like that, just a reconfiguration of some outbuildings and single family homes that exist off, just near the um Rotary Trail entrance off Fishatory Road.
Alright. Item F, for information only, Village of Oregon, two thousand twenty-four affordable housing report.
Um, great, can we just do a motion that we don't oppose for the E T J C S M?
We have no, we need a motion to not object to the uh extraterritorial jurisdiction or not to object to certified survey map at fifteen eighty, fifteen eighty-six county highway D, town of Oregon.
So moved.
Emotion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. You want, you still want to have something else here on this uh affordable housing project?
Um, yeah, I know we're, it's been a long night for all of us, so I just wanted to include this mostly as an F Y I. Um, this is a required report that we do every year. This is, I think, the fifth year we've done it um since we are over ten thousand in population now. It's the state requirement um to do this affordability report. There's usually just, um, I have a template, gets updated every year. Um, we did do a, an updated base map. If you look at the um available kind of unbuilt, unspoken for parcels. Um, so that has all the new Veridian subdivision parcels and things like that that was not, I think, updated last year fully. So um, there was a comment made earlier about the affordability report and um, and sort of maybe the way that it was worded. Um, I do think this is helpful information. I always track a lot, um, different things like the difference between the median value of homes and the, and the average sale price. You know, what's currently listed on Zillow, for example, right now, there's about a twenty-four percent difference between the median home value, which is in the four hundred thousands. And then the, the median um list price for homes within the village and that's in the five hundred thousand. So it's about a twenty-four, twenty-five percent difference. So that's a number I track um kind of over time. I think that's helpful to know. The good news is we did, we're starting to take things off of the to-do list here. The suggestions we made changes to the definition for family um in, in twenty twenty-four in the summertime. So that was an item that was on this list for a long time um as a way to promote affordability and kind of inclusivity in housing. Um, I think other things maybe to take on once we get past some of our outstanding zoning text amendments. Um, but E D U's, accessory dwelling units, tiny homes, I know, I get a lot of questions about that. Right now, really the only thing that we allow are in-family suites, so attached, like mother-in-law suites, sometimes they're called. Um, but I think there's a lot of interest in um, in doing detached kind of tiny homes and backyards, whether they help um, you know, adult children or older parents or provide a rental opportunity um for people in the workforce um who don't need a lot of space. So I think that's another can of worms, probably later this year, we might want to start looking into, but um I'm happy to take any questions, mostly just providing this for your information. We had to have it on the website before the end of January, so it is posted on the village website, too.
Good, okay.
Only question I got is on the map. The multifamily development on the north side of town. Next to the cemetery?
Yep.
Is that, did that happen after this came out? Because I don't see it on there.
You're talking about the Adam Coyle, eighty north, yeah, because it's already built. This is just asking about parcels that are. Could be redeveloped, so it's already built and open, so.
So what are the four then that are off of kind of northeast corner, kind of up by where I live? There's four lots that are on one of those side streets.
Oh, Landover, you talked about those, yeah. So those are kind of funny. So those are actually owned by the Lutheran Church. They're platted. They just use it as green space and it doesn't look like single family homes, but when the neighborhood, when they purchased that land and. I don't know the full history, but they're owned by the church.
Yeah, they came back and they wanted some addition, I remember, yeah, that's.
Yeah, but I haven't heard any discussion about them ever selling those off or.
They just wanted to have that property.
Okay.
For the church.
Yeah, but I think those are all zoned, single family up there.
Thank you.
Okay, no other new business? Status of developments, projects, anything, Lauren? We're pretty well, I'll go ahead.
Yeah, I'll try to keep this brief. We do have quite a lot going on. We're transitioning, even though it's still just February, getting ready to get started on quite a few big projects. Most notable ones upcoming are, of course, the wastewater treatment plant. We did take bids on that in mid-January. And the village board did award that to stop construction, so.
Really?
Yep, and very good prices, at least by our metrics, so we're excited to get going on that. Two well projects, the well three rehabilitation and the well six project, both scheduled to start probably around March or April of this year. And then our major street reconstruction project for this year is North Oak Street between East Lincoln and Park Street to the south. So that'll be a big project. It will be phased. Rather intricately to minimize disruptions to the school during the school year. As well as all the other demands and needs that folks have for that major north-south corridor. One thing that I will just mention, given kind of the, the state of the world today, is that many of our projects this year do depend on state or federal funding. We are aware that there are questions regarding that and of course, we don't know any more than anybody else does, but. We have been watching that very closely. We'll continue to do so and just kind of keep abreast of that and. Hopefully not modify our plans. We are proceeding as though things will, things will be fine, but we're keeping an eye on it.
Great, thank you.
Two other road projects, just to make you all aware of, that are just in the design phase. One would be our next joint county reconstruction, which the construction wouldn't happen until twenty twenty-six, but the northern half of Wolf Street. So from Janesville Street to Pleasant Oak, sort of a phase one of county highway MM, Wolf Street there. Lauren has a, we had RFP out and selected a engineer to work on design because it's a county joint project. They need some. Budget information kind of early in the year, so we'll start that design shortly and. That'll get designed through twenty twenty-five, ready for construction in twenty-six. And then the other project that we got. Direction from the village board to move ahead of where we kind of originally planned in the schedule is the intersection of Alpine Parkway and County Highway CC. Jefferson Street out here. That full reconstruction of Highway CC from Ash Street to kind of the western edge of Highlands of Netherwood, neighborhood pass Peterson Trail. Is still in the CIP to do the full road reconstruction in twenty twenty-eight, but due to more activity at this. Intersection as well as some of the, the traffic studies that we had done last year. The board decided they'd like to move the, just the intersection out here, improvements, likely a stoplight. Up a little bit, so that's in design, that will be in design in twenty twenty-five for construction in twenty twenty-six and that'll be planned so that when the road. Project comes through in twenty twenty-eight, it will, you know, match up and we won't have to demo. Any parts of the new intersection, so that is kind of a small part of that project that has been moved ahead in the schedule.
Okay, thank you. Next plan commission meeting is March sixth. Plus staff meeting agenda, you can see back there the items that were covered on that. Anything else? In motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.